Hey, do me a favor. Will you try and get into my meeting right now? I just want to make sure. I can text you. Thank you for confirming that.
Excuse me. Can I build a house at 452 West Bellamode? Can I build the yard?
Do you have any questions? We are being recorded. All right, good night, everyone. Michael Keith. You muted, Michael.
How are you?
I'm good, I'm good.
Good, good, glad to hear it.
Yes, guess what? I finally, I finally got my new laptop.
Oh, congratulations. Is it blowing you away with the speed?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, uh, it's better. You know, I'm still working on getting things. Yeah, I'm kind of, I have one foot in my old digital world and one foot in my new digital world, so I'm trying to get that sorted out still, but, you know, I did some of it tonight just now. Yeah. So that'd be good.
Congratulations.
All right.
How are you?
Good, you?
I'm doing all right, hanging in there.
All right, good. Nathan, you?
I wrote myself a note to call you about coffee or email you about coffee. I totally forgot until this morning.
Yeah, let me, let me know. Coffee or beer? I'm good with beer.
Okay. Here's my note.
I like what I'm hearing.
You guys doing anything for the summer?
Well, uh, I just got back from a camping trip. We were out in, the Mohawk Trail State Park.
Cool.
Right on the, right on the Cold River.
Yeah, it's a great location.
Did you find the, uh, there, there's a grove of old growth there somewhere? Yeah, there's a couple, there's a couple of them, and we went to the Trees of Peace. Yeah. And, yeah, it's quite lovely. Impressive? Oh, yeah, you know, I mean, it's kind of funny. I realized that I went, I went there before and you can see some of them right there from the road. It's, it's like a dirt road, you know, an old wood, wood, wood road and, but there's a little tra- like foot trail they actually take to get down into the grove and there's like a sign in the woods. So I totally missed that last time I went. Uh, this time I got to see it and we were there with a bunch of kids and, you know, it's, uh, it's cool. It's very neat. Yeah, I, I, I went there once with my wife and we, uh, yeah, we could, we didn't find, we, we didn't have time and we ended up never got to the old growth. Yeah. Yeah, there's one. You haven't seen it?
I've been there, but I hadn't, I know they're there, but I hadn't, I didn't have any tips as to where to find it.
Well, you know, there's a, there's a lot of really old trees all throughout the park. Um, and it's just a, you know, that's, that's just areas where the very oldest and the very tallest ones are. Right, but even in the campsite where we were, I mean, there were some stumps where the trees had, you know, been cut. Yeah, I don't know if they were just a hazard to the campground or just, you know, fell down and they kind of leveled them off, but those stumps were very, very wide. You know, white, old, very old white pines and some old hemlock in there. And there's another entrance. You know, we were in there kind of like on the Route Two side, but if you go up, I want to say Zora Road. Um, you know, you go up the backside and that's where the other grove is, the, uh, I don't know, like the, the Grove of the Elders, I think they call it. And that's another, you know, a bunch of, uh, old white pines there. But on that side, you also see a lot of like really big ash trees, uh, really, really old, uh, yellow birch and, uh, other species like that. So it's, it's cool. You know, I, uh, it would be cool to go there with someone who was a, you know, in the know kind of forester type, you know, to get all the neat details and everything they have.
Yeah, we made it to a quorum.
We did, we did. It being 7:01 PM. I'll call this meeting on the Shrewsbury Planning Board to order for, uh, July 14th. The meeting is being recorded. Before we move into our agenda, I am going to allow a few minutes for folks to join who haven't yet.
Hey, Tom.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, Tom. Hi, Deacon. Oh, Jeff. Mateo will have fun when he does the minutes on this meeting because I logged in early and no one else was here. And I got nervous that somehow I was in as the participant, not the host, so I, I called Elizabeth to, uh, say, hey, join my meeting real quick. I want to make sure like I have a waiting room and all that stuff.
It all worked out?
Yes, it did work out, but you'll, you know, there's some kid, there's some kids and, you know, things like that going on, so.
Hopefully identify themselves.
You know, we can, we can, the meeting was not yet called to worry yet, you know, so it doesn't need to really go in the minutes. All right, we have, uh, we have everyone. We have everyone here, including our associate member. We also have Allison. Oh, we're missing Steve. That's right. Okay. I, uh, I can count, I swear. I just, I think I counted Tom without realizing it.
And we have a teacher in summer mode.
What's that?
Oh, it's a summer mode.
Yes.
It's a really, it's a really great time to be a teacher. Yeah.
Oh, good, good. Okay. I think, I think it's safe that whoever is here is, uh, is going to be here is already here. And we'll move into our first agenda item, which is election of the chair.
I am thrilled to nominate Nathan Murphy to be our chair.
Um, I second that.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second for, uh, to nominate me to serve another year as chair. Uh, do we have any discussion? I want to start the discussion and note that, uh, for this, for this, uh, term, I think, uh, moving forward, we'll, we'll probably put this on the agenda item immediately after the annual election. Um, you know, I think in the past, it's been done at the start of the fiscal year, which makes sense in a sense, uh, and, you know, especially for boards that are appointed on the fiscal year by the select board, but for elected boards, the, you know, the, the election, um, is effective immediately from, from what we understand. So we'll, moving forward, I think we'll nominate a chair, because what an awkward situation we would be in if the, if, if I was nominated as chair to serve and then we weren't gonna, you know, and then I didn't get reelected and I still had a couple of months left as chair. I guess I, I'm just gonna ask, is, is anyone else, uh, you know, looking to gain some leadership experience or build a resume and, and or, or just really step up their volunteering and, and serve as chair, uh, for the next year? Is anyone, uh, doesn't like the job I'm doing and wants, thinks they might do a better job than me, uh, you, you know, you're really welcome to speak up?
Nice try. I'm a real slacker. I have no ambition to be a chair.
It's not true, Michael.
All right. Maybe you want to have six co-chairs?
That's a, that's a thought, Tom.
No, no.
Okay. Uh, that being the case, I will call the roll. Jeff Weston?
Hi.
Keith Hasty?
Hi.
Michael DeCara?
Hi.
Ashley Pycroft?
Hi.
And, uh, Deacon Bonner?
Deacon is muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I'm totally in favor.
I'll, I'll abstain. The, uh, the motion passes with a clear majority.
Unanimously, I think.
Well, I abstain, so it's, uh, it might, uh, save it from being unanimous, but, okay, looks like another, another year as chair. So, uh, thank you everyone for the vote of confidence. I appreciate it.
My congratulations to you.
Thank you, thank you. You know, I mean, you know, if, if somebody, uh, else was voted in, I might have a, I would have a little pang in my ego, right? But, uh, mostly I would, I would, uh, I might, I might let out a little holler, but maybe next year. Okay, moving on. Uh, is there anyone here to make public comment? I do not see any members of the public, uh, so I'm assuming no. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. Landowner Education and Guidance. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. Okay, we have, uh, review and approve minutes for 6/17/2025, 5/12/2025, 11/25/2024, 11/4/2024, 8/5/2024, and 6/10/2024. We'll start with the more recent meetings first and we'll continue to do this until, uh, you know, hopefully we'll wrap it up quickly, but I will stop at 7:30 if we're not already done. To start, do I hear a, a motion to approve the minutes from 6/17/2025? Michael, DeCara moves. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Jeff Weston, seconds. Any discussion?
So I, I didn't see 6/17 in the Google folder. I saw 6/9.
Me too.
Did I put 6/17, but it was really 6/9?
There was a meeting on 6/9, but it was that Select Board and Planning Board combined to, um, right? That was the 17th, because that was my last day of school, to appoint Tom, I think, was Associate Member thing.
Okay, oh.
And, yeah, the ninth was our last meeting.
The ninth was our last meeting? Okay. So we had a motion for the 17th? Is that what we did? That was what was on the email.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Michael, I'll ask that you withdraw your motion.
Happily. I, I didn't see it either, but I thought I was missing something obvious.
No, it's, it's okay. And then, uh, Jeff will ask all you also to withdraw your second. I see you nodding, but if you would, just unmute yourself.
Um, done.
Thank you. Okay. Um, my apologies, that was a little slip up there. I think I, yeah. Yeah, lost in the mix up. Okay, so we'll move on to.
I'll move to approve the minutes of May 12th, 2025. That sound right?
Okay, thank you. Michael moves. Second, here a second. Second, seconds to approve the minutes from May 12th, 2025. Any discussion?
I did see in the, uh, group of people who attended, there was just George. I'm not sure who George was, but I imagine he should probably have a last name.
Well, I would, I would be certain that, uh, Lanews Clerk was, uh, you know, probably just going off, uh, that, you know, they were logged in as George and we might not have had a, a last name.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it's, it's a practice to name, uh, you know, those members of the public who are in attendance, of course, if, uh, you're in attendance at a public meeting, you're under no, uh, real obligation to, to give your name, um, even though they might ask you to do so. So we'll leave, uh, George in there unless anyone knows, happens to know who, who George is.
I believe I do, but he didn't actually speak at the meeting because there is a George who's in the butter to the land that was being talked about. Uh, but I, you know, I can't say that with 100% certainty.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
I, I had a bunch of edits that I gave Mateo, um, which I think he might have incorporated, but I don't know if they were captured in the Google Doc, but, uh.
The, the Google Doc is dated June 10.
I think I sent it afterwards.
You think you sent it after that? Okay.
Yeah, so the, the things that are notable in executive session, I explained that board will turn to open session as opposed to you, I think. Because they called us into executive session.
Right, yeah, five o'clock.
Yeah. Um, and then it got, I, let's see, uh, I'm trying to figure out which got added by who. Uh, I think that was probably the most notable one. Everything else is pretty straightforward. Oh, on page five, right before unanticipated business, I suggested taking out, your comment about the lawsuit. At the top of page five, Murphy indicates that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that doesn't really, uh, add very much. I, uh,
Reasonable omission, because it doesn't really change the tenor of the conversation.
Does anyone else, uh, have any edits or anything like that? All right, so, um, just to kind of make it clear, do you want to just, uh, amend your motion to just say that, uh, you know, the board will approve the minutes, as, uh, as modified with your, uh, request to our Lanews Clerk?
Um, I can, it's fine to make the motion on the front end and then just say it's approved as amended, if anyone doesn't have objections. So we can just say, vote, vote to approve as amended.
Okay. Then, uh, that, that should be, uh, good. So, you know, Mateo, that you've received your, uh, you read us from Michael at some point and, uh, you can incorporate those into these, uh, minutes, uh, as approved with those edits from Michael. Okay, and now I'll, uh, call the roll. Keith Hasty?
Hi.
Michael DeCara?
Hi.
Deacon, uh, Deacon Bonner? What was that?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Jeff Weston?
Hi.
And, uh, Ashley Pycroft?
Hi.
And I think I'll abstain and, uh, the motion passes. Thank you.
I'll move to approve the minutes of November 25th, 2024.
Second.
Michael has moved and Keith has seconded a motion to approve the minutes from 11/25/2024. Do we have any discussion?
I have a question. I believe I was not at that meeting and I'm wondering, what's the best practice with this? Would it be for me to abstain or can I still approve them? Yeah, Michael?
I would abstain.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Often, oftentimes, you, you know, you hear members abstain when they were not at a meeting. However, if, if you happen to have, uh, watched the recording of the meeting and reviewed the minutes, then, uh, you know, there's no, nothing that would, uh, prohibit you from voting to approve those minutes.
Okay, noted, thank you.
I think she has to give the meeting five star rating before she can vote.
Yeah, yeah, if you could go on Yelp. Okay, so, uh, any other discussion on this or? What was this? Is this a, uh, okay, yeah. Um, yeah, okay, I'll call the roll. Um, Ashley Pycroft?
Abstained.
Okay, and Deacon Bonner?
Hi.
Okay, uh, Keith Hasty?
Hi.
Jeff Weston?
Hi.
And Michael DeCara?
Hi.
Did you vote?
I think that's it. Um, I have, I will abstain. And I think that, uh, the motion passes. We had, uh, two abstentions and, uh, four eyes. Uh, Robert Raymond was at the meeting, obviously, he's not here with us anymore, so, uh, the motion carries for the minutes November 25th, 2024.
I'll move to approve the minutes of November 4th, 2024.
Fourth, 2024. Michael has moved. Keith has seconded to approve the minutes from November 4th, 2024. Is there any discussion?
I made some edits I suggested to Mateo in that first section about, um, the ADU law, um, but it was just little wording, nothing really substantial. Um, so I could go through them, but it doesn't really change the meaning of anything. So I'll, I can, if people want me to, I can do it, but it's up to you guys.
Does anyone have any thoughts on that or? Okay, uh, if there's no further discussion, I will call the roll and Michael DeCara?
Hi.
Keith Hasty?
Hi.
Deacon Bonner?
Hi.
Jeff Weston?
Hi.
Ashley Pycroft?
Hi.
I will abstain. The motion carries to approve the minutes from November 4th, 2024.
I'll move to approve the minutes of August 5th, 2024.
Second.
All right, Michael has moved and Keith has seconded to approve the minutes from August 5th, 2024. We have any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none. I'll call the roll. Jeff Weston?
Hi.
Keith Hasty?
Abstain.
Okay, uh, Michael DeCara?
Hi.
Deacon Bonner?
Hi.
Ashley Pycroft?
Hi.
Saying the motion carries uh for to with two extensions. Four in favor, two extensions to approve the minutes from. August fifth, twenty twenty-four. Okay, last one, I believe, right?
Yep, I'll move to approve the minutes of June tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay. Second, here, second, second, okay. And he, uh, so Michael has moved, Keith has seconded to approve the minutes from June tenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have any discussion? A second. Okay, um. Hearing and seeing none, I'll call the roll. Um, Deacon Bonner.
Hi.
Keith Hasty.
Hi.
Michael DeCara.
Hi.
Jeff Weston.
Hi.
Ashley Pycroft.
I.
I will abstain. The motion carries five in favor, one extension. Or is approved the minutes of. What was that? Six, June tenth, twenty twenty-four. Okay, that wraps up our approval of minutes. We're making good progress here. Okay, I'm going to allow Allison Gage uh to be a presenter. Our next agenda item will be. Allison Gates, Clean Energy Siding and Permitting Regional Coordinator for the Western Region.
Hi.
Allison, are you, uh, can you hear us? Can we see you, hear you? Are we good?
Yes, can you hear, can you hear and see me?
I can hear and see you, excellent.
Um, hi, everyone. If I look familiar, I think I was here almost exactly a year ago talking about pollinator zoning, so. Nice to be back. I I was at the Franklin Regional Council of Governments um for about six years doing land use and natural resources planning. Um, but got overly interested in the siding and permitting of clean energy, so I jumped to uh this new division at the state. Um, as the regional coordinator in the Division of Clean Energy Siding and Permitting for all Western Mass. So thank you for having me. Um, I just started exactly a month ago, so I'm um. In that month, I've been trying to reach out to communities to get some feedback on. What we're developing for the straw proposal and then draft regulations because we are on a super compressed timeline, as you probably know. Um, I know you all have been following the process pretty closely, so I'm not gonna um pull you through the the full rundown. Um. Of what we're required to do over the next couple of months. Um, but just a reminder, my division is just focusing on the what they're calling small infrastructure. So um up to twenty-five megawatts of generation or up to a hundred megawatts of storage. Of course, twenty-five megawatts of generation could be a project that's over a hundred acres, so it's really not all that small. Um, so the regulations that we're developing will will apply to all those projects. Um, and then anything outside of those thresholds would go through the EFSB. Energy Facility Siding Board, um, or if a town chose to opt out of this process, um, you could have projects go through the EFSB as well. Um, the goal is to get projects permitted within twelve months, um, once they're filed with the town. Um, that's really the the big push behind all of this is to get projects permitted faster. Um, I'm going to skip that because I think you're all well well aware of what we're cooking up. Um, so in terms of our timeline, um. Where we finished our straw proposal last week, um, legal is turning that into draft regulations. Um, and then they'll go through a process to become public and we'll have, we're hoping to have the public comment period for open. For a month in the fall, um, so likely mid-September to mid-October. Um, and in the meantime, what it it's because it's under compressed timeline, we're trying to get feedback now during and. Well, now up and through the public comment period, so we can incorporate as much feedback as possible into the final version that gets filed in the fall. Um. So there are a lot of different moving pieces, but I'm hoping to get feedback on two components from you all tonight. One is. The um municipal permitting process. Um, so. Pre-filing. We've been thinking that that would be at least sixty days before a town submits um their completed application. Um, and during the pre-filing, they would complete a robust community outreach plan. Um, and with the pre-filing, um. They would have to have gathered all of the relevant information, have that all filed. Um, and someone from the town would be making sure that that's all complete. Um.
Yeah, Allison, can I interrupt?
Yeah, go for it.
I think you said it at town files, but I think you meant the developer files.
Yep, the developer, sorry, thank you. The developer would file it, town would make sure it's all correct. Um. But. What I'm curious about is learning more. About what might be um the most difficult part of the twelve-month review timeline for towns. Um, so where this is different is that. In some cases, boards will be doing a concurrent review, some some towns, the permitting may go sequentially. Um, but I'm just trying to hear from communities what. Where this could be difficult to meet a twelve-month timeline. Um. I'm wondering how it typically goes in Chutesbury when it when a developer files. Um, would you do a sequential permitting path? Would different boards be reviewing at the same time? How how does that work for you all?
So I'm now with Allison, so I'm not going to take up a lot of airtime now, but Deacon, maybe you could just speak to what happened with Wheelock because I think that's a real life example.
Um. Well, that took forever. Um. The. The the. We we really, um. The the um, the original developer came to a came to the town. Before application and. Just let us know what they were going to be doing it. We didn't really, we didn't really have any idea how to how to handle it. Everything was made up as we went along. Um, we had no zoning that covered it. Um. It took a long time. We got very tangled up with um. Um. We got very tangled up with um. A claim about Native American issues on the site, which uh. Really became an incredibly ugly situation. Um, and I. I think I think the whole thing took about three years before before we gave the approval. Um. You it it was terrible. Uh, it's true, we have zoning now that that covers it.
Yeah, what year was? So this was before your current zoning.
I think I think they probably start, they probably started talking to us in fourteen and I think we gave the seventeen. It was a long, long struggle.
Through the Conservation Commission as well.
What uh?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it did. But not that they had to um. They were primarily concerned with the the wetlands delineations.
Yep.
I mean, they didn't, that that was really what they were after.
Yep. And this this might be a question more for the Conservation Commission, but um. Do I think as a part of your bylaw, you now require wetlands to be delineated as a part of the pre-filing process? Is that? That's that was not required during that project?
Yeah, our our current bylaws require an ANRAD. So the first version of SOLA bylaw, which is two thousand sixteen.
Yeah.
They were they were separate and then when we did the updated version, um, which was two thousand twenty. Um, we realized that rather than create. Some kind of wetlands documentation that. Was separate from the CONCON, we just required that the ANRADs from the CONCON be part of the application materials.
Okay.
And I don't remember if we required the the ANRAD before the application or or after. I mean, it certainly did happen.
Yeah, one one thing I've been hearing is that the um. Developers sometimes do not fully delineate wetlands, so then when the town is trying to review it as a part of the pre-filing process, they end up having to go back and forth. For a really long time just to get the wetlands delineated. Um.
Yeah, it wasn't, there was a lot of, I I think they had to do it twice.
Yeah. Um, so as a part of the pre-filing regulations, we're thinking about putting in language in there that those ANRADs would have to be completed. Um, as a part of pre-filing so that there that doesn't. Get sucked into the twelve-month review period. It's done ahead of time. Um, I'm. Hoping that that would maybe alleviate some of some of the pressure on the twelve months. Um. But are there are there other thing? So. Um. Are there other things that came up during that example or other examples that slowed down the process that we could try and account for in our regulations?
Well, one thing that would be very helpful would be if the um, if the planning board didn't have to make decisions about whether or not. Um. Um. Native American claims uh. Were were valid. I mean, we were in the position where we had to make decisions which we which were very difficult for us. We we had to. Um. We had to hire a an archaeologist and. Hmm. It was. If that if that issue were not not on the planning board, it would be very good.
Um, so is that part of like a historical commission per like what 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 permit or process was that tied into?
It just wound up being on the planning board. It was, we were making it up as we went along. I mean, and it was real, it was really a decision we would have preferred not to have to deal with.
Deacon, there's. Wa- was that? That was a special permit, right?
Yes.
Even though it wasn't, you know, so that was. Proceeding any specific bylaw for solar, but it was. It was submitted to the planning board as a special permit application and during the. Proceedings of that special permit, the issue of uh. The issue came up that you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. And it it the planning board is, it just seems to me the planning board is not the right place to be making those that decision.
I think part of the, if Deacon had to have been, I mean, I think Deacon's. Point is, you know, on the one hand, there was claims that there was, you know, indigenous sacred burial grounds. And if and if you look at statute, there's protections in some instances at the state level. There's also protections at the federal level. Um, but. The 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 difficulty was validating that because the landowner would only let certain people on the land. So they would not let indigenous representatives on the land, which meant that the planning board had to figure out. Do you go with the Western archaeologist to make a determination, which who was allowed on the land? But it was a very awkward thing and just if it's not obvious, Deacon was the only one on the planning board at the time.
Hmm.
Um, I was in the audience, but I think no one else was on, but.
Well, Steve Bressler was.
Yeah, no, I mean, who's here now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And it it was incredibly awkward.
In the by.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. In the bylaws that we now have adopted, you know, determining. Uh, considering that. They're still being vetted out by the Attorney General, but one of the things that's in there relates to this.
Yeah.
Um, where, you know, we have a process now for dealing with that situation should it arise again. Um. Yeah, and I'm very curious about how just how our bylaws. Will play into this whole process, what parts of those might be honored, what parts of those will need to be tweaked? But I don't want to derail the conversation, but that's definitely something I'm thinking about.
That is the second part of the conversation I want to have, so I I'll definitely come back to that. Um, yes, Keith.
So um, I was, again, I was in the peanut gallery during that um period. And my recollection was that it was an issue that was brought up by a member of the public. Actually, from another town. But I think since then, it's been it's been codified in the bylaws, right, Michael, the the how to address? And we've also, our Historic Preservation Commission has also put together, I think, a pretty good catalog. Of known features in town that, again, I, we're not privy to it because a lot of it's, you know, kept close hold just for. Preservation purposes, but I think we might have a better handle on what what's actually in town now, you know?
I don't, yeah, yes and no. I mean, I think to your point, it's not all publicly available, but we're, you remind me of Keith is that. Subsequent, the Historic Commission created a document that they shared with the planning board on a recommenda- recommended procedure. Um, so that. Some information, just generally speaking, historic commissions don't share with the public. So as a matter of like, how to do the stance where you say that there's concerns without exposing the information about where the locations are, it's a little bit of an awkward thing, but. I can send you that document because it did prompt a lot of conversation. And the procedure, you know, that Keith and Ashley referenced is mostly about. Noticing and making sure that, you know, like you and I talked about that, you know, all the tribes who have some contacts, since there's not a local representative in Chutesbury. That they get noticed in time and that they're allowed to raise their hand and say, hey, there's something here. I think the the unresolved quandary, which really. One of the quandaries was who can go on the land because it's private land, so the private landowner gets to say. Um, and our current bylaw basically encourages the landowner to let representatives on, but you can't force that issue, so. Um, it's. I don't, I I'm pretty confident that no one is expecting to trip over this and that those proceedings until it showed up. Um, and, you know, since then, like there was the North Hampton Rotary was an issue, so I mean, I think there's a little bit more awareness of it.
Some clarity on the part of the state for how to deal with this would be really helpful.
Okay.
And certainly something you should anticipate is is gonna happen. Um, another, can I move on from this and bring up another thing?
Sure.
Okay, um, just thinking about the resources of the boards, the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, you know, we're all volunteers. We meet once a month a month, um, sometimes more than once a month because we have things we have to deal with, but. Uh, I I live pretty close to what had possibly been a site for solar and when the ANRAD was done, you know, they were back there with. Powerful big drones and all kinds of cool equipment, um, which of course our town doesn't possess, so I'm. I think that could potentially be something to hold up, just the process, because we only meet once a month and ANRADs are. Very technical, but I hear you saying that that would potentially happen in the pre-application. So.
Yeah, I think I think it would have to, um, otherwise I don't see how. Projects could move through in in twelve months. I I met with the town of Amherst on on Friday and their conservation. Conservation agent was there and she was saying that. Depending on the on the developer, that can take eighteen months. Um. And I I guess my concern was that the town, it it because the. The way the process is set up right now, if if the town didn't permit a project in twelve months, you would be met with having to go through constructive approval. And if you're giving it a good faith effort, then then that's not. Faithful to the process. So trying to trying to like iron out all of those issues.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I have a question for. Anyone who maybe. Has very carefully read the.
has, uh, very carefully read the statutes on all this stuff, uh, as it stands now. Well, I guess maybe it doesn't stand right because you're drafting the regulations as we speak, the regulations haven't been drafted.
Correct. There, we have a straw process and now they're getting turned into regulations through.
Yeah, I guess that answers my, so it's truly, you know, I'm, I'm. What's the question? Well, the question is, you know, like, is it already kind of written down that, you know, uh, you know, it has to be twelve months and then, you know, when the, when the developer, you know, puts in the ad, an ANRAD at the same time, that takes eighteen months and, and, uh, you basically run out the clock, right?
Yeah.
I was gonna editorialize. I mean, I think as Allison said at the beginning, the impetus was the state thought the towns are taking too much time, so they wanted to have the streamlined process. But the coordination of committees, as we're talking about now, it's doing it simultaneously doesn't necessarily work and it doesn't make it simpler. Uh, in that regard, the other thing I'll just mention, which I, I think is a defect in the law, like when we did WELO, the parties could mutually agree to extend the deadline. So if we were coming up on twelve months, both parties could say, we need to, we need two more months to finish this out and that would be good. There's nothing in the law that says you can extend, which is a real problem.
Yeah, I talked to, Rick, Rick has talked about this and I think we can, we are allowed to put in language about a continuance, a mutually agreed upon continuance. I don't know how long, but I'm pretty sure we're gonna, going to be able to put that in the, in the draft regulations.
Yeah, I was gonna say, same thing, a, a tolling agreement or something, if you can stop the clock. Again, if you have to do some sort of historic preservation,
Mm-hmm.
Hiring an archaeologist and getting on an archaeologist's schedule and then getting them to write a report, hell, there goes your year right there. Um, and I could see wetland issues where there's controversy or uh, can't get out to the site or, you know, whatever, um, that would eat up a bunch of the year right there. So I, I can see a bunch of things. Wrenches throw, being thrown into the works here that would, would eat the year up real quick.
Yeah, um, generally speaking, in, in Chutesbury, if something had to go through conservation commission and the planning board, are you issuing the special permit, then it goes to CONSCOM or are you working at the same time? How does that work? Or is it totally project dependent and hard to say?
I feel like the ANRADS come first, just based on
Mm-hmm.
what I've experienced, but you all have more experience than me.
Well, looking at our current situation, although we don't have any applications in, all the ANRADS for the, the five sites are expired. So, um, it's remains to be seen. Um, I think it is project by project, like I'm just thinking about, um, the normal size, um, special permits we did, like Whitman didn't require one, I don't think, but Nathan, have there been other ones that we've needed CONCOM approval for?
Well, I think, uh, Geez had a special permit and he wanted to get the special permit first before he went to the CONCOM. And I think we just put a condition that, um, any, you know, any work, you know, that would, uh, take place in a resource area would need to be reviewed by the conservation commission, something to that effect. I don't remember the exact language. Right? And I think that's been something that's, it's in the bylaw, right? You know, that you need to ensure compliance with the Chutesbury Wetland Protection Bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
So if that's a condition on a special permit, then if the conservation commission issues a notice of violation and that's tantamount to, uh, a violation of the special permit, if, if that condition is in there, right? So it doesn't necessarily have to be in any kind of an order per se, uh, unless there may be, I'm not as familiar with the, all the provisions in our solar, the section of our, our bylaw that deals with the uh, large ground mounted solar installations. Uh, there may be more specific requirements for that. Michael, do you know or?
It's, it's all, it's pretty much just tying it to the, the ANRAD and then there's limitations to, you know, that mirror what the CONCOM would be looking for. So it's nothing above and beyond in terms of proximity to wetlands.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, for the twelve month period that you're talking about, please let me know if I'm on the right page. Would that include something called a community benefit agreement being ironed out and written, or would that be after the twelve month process?
So my understanding is that the community benefit agreements would only come through for the, what's considered as a large project. Um, so those are the projects that would be going through the EFSP.
Okay.
I think they would be ironed out in the pre-finaling process, but I'm, I'm honestly less familiar with, with their timelines.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't be about what you're asking now for?
No.
These are about smaller projects. Okay.
Yeah, just, just where, where things would get stuck in the twelve month period. Um, but.
No, I do, I, it is worth noting that there is a pre-filing community engagement piece, Tom. So it's, it's not that there's an agreement that has to come out of it, but there needs to be some community engagement on the front end.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're, we're hoping to have pretty extensive requirements in terms of how communities are noticed about the projects, how information is posted, how public comments are posted, how information about showing that, that the developer read the public comments and incorporated into the project or posted. Um, I do, I do quickly want to switch gears to the zoning, um, question. So right now, um, the, the green communities division is working on coming up with model bylaws for solar as well as battery storage. Um, and I believe the intent is, is that communities that adopt those bylaws would be found to not be in violation of, um, uh, chapter forty A, section three, the, the solar carve out. Um, so if you adopt those, then you would not, you would not be overly pro- prohibiting solar or battery storage in your town. Um, the only problem is, is that those drafts will likely not be, or those models will not be available until July and our regulations are set to go into effect March first. So the timing is off. Um, and that's going to further delay communities being able to review them and then get them a special time meeting. So we're trying to push that up a little bit or at least, um, put out information about what's going to be in the models so that communities can be better informed. Um, I don't have a lot of information on it right now. Um, sorry, that's not, that's not a great answer, but, um, I did want to ask while, while the model is being developed, if there are sections of your bylaw um, that you think work well, or you'd like to see in a state model, that would be helpful for me to know. And then I can, um, share that out because it's still very much in development. So anything can happen.
Um, yeah. I'm listening. Jeff Weston here. Could I just throw out something that, um, I think the state should be aware of? You know, in New York, which has one of the largest unfiltered water supplies systems, I think in the country, uh, serviced by nine million people. Massachusetts also has one, it's, uh, unfiltered, three million people. In New York, they have a series of reservoirs that are very highly protected against contamination. And I think that the eight towns that border the Quabin should have a special uh, should be notified, a special, I don't know, qualification or something that the state seems to be unaware of the dangers of lithium ion battery contamination right into the Quabin. So I don't know why that isn't happening. It certainly is happening in New York and protecting the, you know, the, the nine million, um, people that are serviced by the unfiltered, uh, water system. Why isn't that happening in Massachusetts? Why isn't there some kind of special delineation for the towns that are protecting the Quabin? I mean, how long can Boston survive without, um, can you imagine having to go through a filter- filtration system, a build a filtration system for, for Boston? And, you know, you have one Tesla battery, you know, in, in California, in two thousand and twenty-three, required six thousand gallons of water to put that out. And can you imagine all that polluted water, all the lithium ions and cadmium ions and so forth being drained into the Quabin reservoir? So why doesn't the state realize that and have some special delineation for the towns that are protecting the water supply of the Quabin? That's what I would like to know.
Yeah, that, that's a good question. Um, I, I know that as a part of our, what, what we're able to influence is, um, where these facilities can be sited and how they would affect, uh, environmental resources. So we are trying to put in some language that batteries cannot be built in zone one, zone two, well head protection areas on any in any, uh, overlay district that's designed to protect water quality. So we're trying to um, allow for that as a part of this process, but that would.
Those eight towns should be, uh, uh, identified, the tributaries going through the Quabin should be identified and that is a whole separate category. What, what are the people in Boston doing? Not protecting water supply? What do you, it's, it's astonishes me.
Mm-hmm.
It's New York protecting them and Massachusetts, the state house is not protecting their own water supply and Boston runs on that water supply. What's happening here? Bring that to the people who make decisions. Really gets me very upset.
Yeah, that's, that's totally understandable. Thank you. I, I will bring that up. Um, are there, so in terms of your bylaw, um, and, and what elements of uh, the model zoning could incorporate? Are there any elements that you would like to see?
That is a loaded question with this board, Allison.
I know.
We, we've gone through a lot.
Ashley, you should ju- just say what they are, because I didn't, you know, you know.
I mean, we, we, we would love to see the sites limited to fifteen acres or less. We would love to see them not in critical, uh, I don't remember all the, the things, natural habitat, um, biozone, is that the other one? Michael, biomass. Critical natural landscape, biomass, um, fifteen acres. We had, we, we love the idea of a, a ratio where land is preserved, um.
You know, you have the four to one.
We have a four to one, yeah. Yep, um, slope, obviously, speaking to what Jeff was saying is an issue, um.
Does that, for, for land?
Should there be lithium storage over an aqu- over an aquifer? That's ridiculous.
Is that in our?
I mean, yeah. Um, indirectly, I think. But there shouldn't be lithium storage over, over aquifers. When aquifers are the, it's our only water supply.
Well, I think the issue, the issue there, I think Allison gets back to if we adopt the bylaws, we're not in violation of the solar exemption. Because we, as well as Wendell, tried two years ago to have an energy storage bylaw, um, and that got rejected by the AG and then that was a zoning bylaw. And the last year we tried to do a general bylaw and the AG rejected that saying it was basically a zoning bylaw. Um, so we don't really have very much language in there about ESS, although I think this group feels, you know, we have mixed opinions about the risks to it, but, um, we've had lots of conversations about, um, energy storage, you know, in relation, um, you know, it's complicated. As I pointed out to Rick, it's smart incentivizes and requires ESS. So it's a complicating factor.
Yeah. Um, for the land preservation requirement, does that have to be on the same parcel as the facility that's being built?
It's writ- it's written that way. We've had subsequent conversations about being flexible, but I think you guys can ju- correct me, but I think it's probably fair to say that the idea is to keep it in town. Um, if not, you know, like, if we were to suggest to the state, the whole idea is to have it be proxim- proximate in some regards to the developed land.
Yeah, Keith.
Since we're talking state level and, uh, I, I have a little bit of a mixed feeling on the, the four to one set aside, um, for renewable energy, that if that were to become, uh, that should not be just solar. It should be any development, any land clearing. So I, I, I have a real hard time with, uh, especially a renewable energy being singled out when a Walmart parking lot would not have to abide by the same, uh, stipulation. So I, I don't think it is, um, perhaps not wise if it doesn't apply to all land clearing activities. I think, in effect, in effect, it could punch, it could, it could push other development into the uh, natural lands. Um, if it's not feasible for solar because of the four to one, but it doesn't apply to an apartment complex, then we may be just pushing apartment complexes out into the, the land that we're trying to save.
Ashley, did you have another comment?
No, I think I'm good. Thanks.
I, for some reason, but I saw your hand raised. Um, that's, that's really all I have. It's, it's just helpful to know, um, where the, where the twelve month process could be held up and, um, learn more about what has worked on your zoning. Um, I'm sure I'll be in touch soon, especially as the, oh, go for it.
Just, you were gonna respond to Ash's question about what can survive in a local bylaw versus?
Yes. Sorry, I guess, yeah, that my original answer was a long-winded way of saying, I don't know. Um, I, that, that is TBD because I, I honestly don't know what's gonna be in, in the model. Um, D O R hired a consultant to, to work on it and they're currently pulling best practices from across the entire country. So they're, they're not even at the, um, point of putting together a proposal or anything. So I, I don't know.
Um, if I can comment again, when people are putting together best practices, why don't you contact the New York system of reservoirs? And why don't you see how well they're protected, um, the, the unfiltered system and ask, ask the, who, I don't even know who to ask. Why isn't this state protecting the Quabin? That's what I want to know.
Yeah, I, I know they have been looking at, at New York because they, they have been doing similar work. So, um, yeah, I can, I can send that along.
Thank you. And also, of course, towns that have, you know, aquifers underneath it. It's ridiculous. Ridiculous, um, uh, what can I say? No, ri- ridiculous to have lithium storage above an aquifer. It doesn't make any sense. Or on tributaries that lead right into the Quabin. Doesn't make sense. You know?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we, we are including language that would allow communities to prohibit, uh, battery storage on those types of resources. So, um, I, I think we are trying to acknowledge that and allow, allow communities to put those protective measures in place.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So I do have one more question. Um, I'll be quick, Nathan. So the, the, is it expected that the town, that all the towns in Massachusetts are going to adopt the compliant bylaws or is it more our bylaws can stand as long as they are compliant?
Yeah, I think, I think the latter. Um, so that it is less of a major overhaul. Um, you know, you might have to adopt some pieces of it, but you know, you, it wouldn't be like us. I'm hoping that it would not be a starting over.
Okay, because there's probably towns that don't have them.
Exactly, so.
So these are like an example.
Yes, yes. Um, but again, TBD, um, yeah.
Right. Well, thank you, Allison, for coming in. I appreciate, um, your openness to listening to us, asking questions and being open to incorporating some of our suggestions and concerns when you uh, bring the information back to the powers that be in the state. Thank you.
Yep, of course. That's why I'm here.
Allison.
Yep.
At this time, uh, do you know what kind of alternatives are being looked at if, say, you know, a, a municipality kept their existing bylaw that may or may not be, you know, up to snuff with section three, forty-eight, section three, right?
What, what would be the, the outcome of that?
Right, right. The town, the town meeting says no.
I don't know. That is.
That's what I figured.
It's all my long- It's on my long list of questions related to the model zoning. Um, yeah.
I have another quick question too, which I I'm. You know, I uh I don't really get involved in the uh this stuff too much on account of uh. My employment situation, but uh. You know, I I was surprised to see the Attorney General decisions on standalone energy storage. And citation of Tracer Lane is justification for that. So I'm wondering if uh there's been any challenges to those uh. Decisions by the Attorney General uh so far and and whether any of them have. Are in court or have been uh fully litigated or anything like that, do you know?
I I don't know. Um, I was just, are you referencing the one that that came out? Um. I think pretty recently saying that battery storage is protected under forty eight, section three, that one?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, it happened to this town. It it's happened for several months.
I don't know. Um, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I know I could go and search the court document. I was just wondering if you had the info on the top of your head, but.
No.
Thanks again for uh coming out and uh giving everyone a chance to uh. Voice their uh um suggestions and uh everything like that.
Yeah, of course.
I'm so sorry. I have one more quick thing. Is it possible to to have the slideshow shared with us or is it, can you tell us where to find it?
No, um, I can I can send it out to Nathan to distribute and I'll say, um. I didn't go over into the weeds, just, you know, timing, but if you want to take a look at it, what's listed on the slides is on. The proposed components of what's in the straw proposal. Um, so it's a very high level overview of what we are trying to incorporate. So if you read it and have any red flags, please feel free to email me. I'm happy to hear it. Um, and hopefully the draft drugs will be out soon.
Good.
Before we thank Allison, I have a procedural question suggestion, which is given the next item on the agenda, maybe we can actually stick around for five minutes.
I'm available, so that's fine with me.
Okay. Yeah, no, I mean, it's public, she can stay as long as she wants until we get to.
We're gonna, we're gonna like ask questions, she might have an answer.
Yeah, so uh are we, um, does anyone have any last minute questions for Allison? Or any any last minute uh things you'd like to leave us with, Allison?
Nope, that's it. Just thank you for your time. I appreciate it and I'm sure I'll be in touch more as this process continues to develop over the next year.
I'm sure everyone, I'm sure everyone welcomes that. And I would also like to note that I'm I'm glad that this time uh. I remember when you came for the pollinator zoning, I think there was quite a few items going on and I was a little bit uh concerned about time on the agenda and I'm glad that. Today we were able to have a nice uh robust conversation. So um, thanks again for everything, uh everybody. Next on the agenda is the planning board designation for FERCOG, uh which I've been. In there for the last uh. Couple of years or so and uh been falling quite short on that uh obligation. Um, so if uh anybody is interested in going to FERCOG. Then uh I would like to to hear about it. And I know Michael must have a question or something about it. Uh, too, so if I don't know if you want to uh say anything, Michael.
Yeah, I when. I can't remember if Lynda was presenting to the select board or not, but you know, as part of the updating of the charter, it sounded like there was also. Thing about rejiggering the the Franklin County Planning Body in terms of frequency and composition. So. I thought you might actually know the answer to what that might look like. So whoever's committing to this will know what they're committing to.
Yeah, my my understand, like regarding how it's being shuffled, um. The old charter, um. I'm sorry, I only like know of this at a very high level, so don't quote me on any of these numbers, but the old charter allowed for up to like eighty members. On the regional planning board, just the way it was. Designed just didn't really make sense in terms of what was needed for a quorum. So I think the redesign is really just shrinking it down. So that it's only a couple of people from each town. You don't have to have a high number of people to have a quorum. Um, and I'm not sure what they did regarding meeting frequency. But I think it was just kind of like making it so what the planning board was already, the regional planning board was doing aligned with what was in the charter.
Okay, so each town will still be, you know, invited to send somebody, so it's not a.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, it's just not like four people for per town.
I don't think we ever hit that.
Yeah, no, that was why they wanted to redo it.
Right, and uh. You know, another uh question on that with with FERCOG, as I recall, looking at the website and I could bring it up, I guess, but. There's a. For the planning, for the, you know, regional planning board, there was a a designate from the planning board and the chair of the select board.
Mm hmm.
So. And and you know, as I understood that the planning board had the authority to designate someone to go to FERCOG. Um, of its, you know, based on that uh charter, but I don't know if. You knew whether or not typically select boards would have would would make that designation for the planning board designate or. Or or anything like that, do you?
I'm not sure. I assumed the planning board chose the designate.
Yeah, you know, that's a. That's what I thought of it. I suppose we can kind of go back to our own uh. Maybe more of an in-house question, I suppose, but I was just wondering if you if you had any experience with that. That's kind of in the weeds.
No, sorry.
No, very good. Well, having uh gotten those questions out of the way, is there anyone that's interested in this?
I'm curious, but I'm not sure if I understand it and I don't know if I'm eligible.
You're eligible.
Okay.
Anybody is eligible, I think, if we designate.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Um, I can only see five members listed on the website right now while I'm looking, but is that just the executive members perhaps?
Yeah, it's.
Or am I not looking at the right? I see.
They don't really list the members on the website.
Okay, because I see. Six listed members on the FERCOG Regional Planning Board Executive Committee contacts.
Yeah, executive committee. So that's the executive committee. So that's a, that's a smaller body, um.
But those would be some of the people on this board we're talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah, that would be some of that.
Because I recognize at least one of the names or two.
Okay, well, you know, if no one's ready to jump on this, I'm gonna ask everyone to think real long and hard about. About doing it before you sign up to be chair next year.
Um, I'm I'm happy to do it in tandem. Like if you were to, you know, if you and I wanted to do it and take turns or something like that. I think I'd be I'd be totally open to that. I don't think I would be able to get every.
You you should just do it half the time. I you know, I just, I just don't, I don't get there. I don't get there. You know, I'm.
Well, open to anybody else if we want to split it, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Or or I can do it half time, but as long as you know that I won't go all the time.
You know, I mean, you know, if you go at all, you'll be going more than, I I mean, I I've been to, I went to maybe one or two meetings and then I just kind of fell off and I mean, it's just. You know, I'm not gonna make excuses for myself, but I didn't do it. So uh, Mike, Michael, should we um? Should we designate you then?
Sure.
And does someone want to move to designate Michael to be our uh representative at uh the the FERCOG Regional Planning Board? Or, yeah.
Well, I just have to, I just have to say, is Tom interested?
Yeah.
Tom, are you interested?
I'm definitely interested. I just wanted to know, like, is it once a month? Is it once a quarter? Do we know the days of the week when it happens? Because just for conflicts potentially, is any knowns?
They're usually quarterly on Thursdays. Um, and I think all of them are hybrid except for one, one a year in the summer is in person.
And are they usually more like five P M or seven P M or do you know?
I think six to eight.
Okay. Um, I mean, that would only potentially conflict with CONCOM routinely, but if we're only talking for a year. That sounds, I I could do it. I'm happy to do it. I'm interested, but I don't want to um. Do what somebody else might have wanted to do, or if somebody thinks there's a better person for it. I'm happy to hear that.
It sounds like we're gonna have multiples based on what Allison said, so, I mean.
Well, that would that would be something worth uh. You know, may maybe talking to them about um if if you can kind of alternate uh designations. I think as it stands, there may be one designate from the planning board and one designate from the select board.
How about, since I'm assuming no one's gonna go in the next month, I I'm happy to email Jessica. That wouldn't find out, you know, what the deal is in terms of select board, planning board, one or two, and then. If we meet the next month there, I'll just email what she says back to everybody and we can make a decision next month.
Do we know when the next meeting is?
Yeah, we we can make a decision next month, I mean.
Does anybody know when the next one is just for?
September twenty sixth, and that one's in person.
That leaves a lot of time to decide, it seems.
Next month it is, huh? Okay, um. Unless anyone wants to talk about this more, I suggest we'll uh move on to our next agenda item.
I want to thank Allison for doing double duty.
You're welcome. Nice to see you all. Good night.
Thank you, Allison.
Yep.
Good night.
Good night, Allison.
All right. It's eight ten. It's time to have a discussion about fiscal year twenty six uh goals.
Wow, you're tight. Look at that.
Tight! I can't believe it. It's because uh called, you know, uh election of chair, public comment, landowner, education and guidance was. Like two minutes and then uh we blew through the minutes pretty quick too. So. Um, you know, this is pretty open ended. The items I put in there are affordable housing, manufactured housing, data centers and other ideas. And I think, you know, maybe we can just start with data centers because it's new and exciting. And uh I'm gonna give a little introduction on the background of this. Which is that we received an inquiry uh to our land use clerk. From a consulting firm in Brooklyn, New York. I can't recall the name of the firm, but you know, it they were. They were asking about uh solar bylaws, energy storage bylaws, and uh they threw in. Uh, data centers um into their inquiry and, you know, what. I took from it was uh, you know, they they advise their. Their clients who may be developers uh of of, you know, probably a lot of solar developers, but possibly other developers, um. You know, of what the kind of municipal, you know, what the regulatory landscape looks like, and they have all the information on what municipalities are are doing in terms of their bylaws and everything. And so they're in the process of of collecting that or maybe expand, you know, they probably started in New York and are now expanding out into the New England area. Um, you know, they may or may not have clients behind the request, uh, or they may just be proactively gathering information. We don't know that. Uh, and Michael kind of reached out and was like, should we uh talk about? Maybe doing a bylaw for data centers? And I said, whoa, 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 that's a little fast, Michael. It's a little fast. They said they're just asking if we have any a bylaw about it, but. You know. I I'm not overly concerned with uh, you know, the town receiving a proposal for a data center. And I'll tell you the reason for that. It's it's because. The uh. The price of energy in New England is among the highest in the country. So that's gonna, that's that's unattractive. If you're looking to develop a data center, you don't want to do it somewhere where the price of electricity is very high. Now, being said, that doesn't mean that uh it's not worth looking at and uh thinking about. Um, and uh. Mateo sent a bunch of material to us, I think Michael and I maybe, or well, I think the whole board was on the email, right? Everyone saw the email?
And not the whole back and forth, but some of it.
Right, yeah. So uh, Michael, do you want to talk a little bit or?
Yeah, I mean, I I've held off doing research, you know, so like I I know just a little bit, but I mean, what I shared with Mateo and Nathan after Mateo sent it out was. I mean, what I understand about data centers is that they use a lot of electricity and they use a lot of water. Um, Nathan. Also identified that, you know, people talk about noise. Um, but what strikes me is that. You know, just rural America in general, like industrial use keeps getting pushed out, you know, so like you're not building a factory, you can do all these other things. And so. It seemed like if nothing else, we spend the next few months, you know, like if everyone's interested, I could do some research and report back what I found and then we can have an initial conversation. And we could decide if we do need a bylaw or not, but it seemed like rather than being flat footed, um. That we can find out what's involved and it might not even have to be an elaborate bylaw, but, you know, I think back to. When we law came about, you know, there was no category. And so the planning board at the time decided it was light industrial for lack of anything else. Um. It'd be nice to sort of know if we need to create a new category or how we do want to address stuff, if we actually do want to address stuff. So. I think at at this point, I would say the next few months. Are really information gathering and then discussion amongst the board, um and then we can make a determination if it's necessary or what we care about.
So that's something to uh for everyone to think about, um. So right now. In theory, this is gonna go under light industry, which is allowed by. Uh, special permit and rural residential and forest conservation, not in town center and not in like by law. So, one question is. If we were to leave everything as it is and a proposal comes in. You know, we we, you know, we also have the uh. All the conditions for special permits. Right, that we uh put in uh for the review criteria. Right? Now that was uh. That was allowed by the Attorney General Review. However, I I would. Be cautious on relying that on that too much based on my reading of the handbook that Michael let me for a little bit. Uh, you know, special permits are are meant to allow a specific use. And that section of the bylaw is a general review criteria. For special permits. So if. That is applicable to any use requiring a special permit, that may be something that is, you know, gonna be uh on shaky ground if it gets into court and 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 litigated. That's that would be my uh. Though there'll be one area of concern. I don't know what else is in there that might alleviate that concern. I haven't done a review of our bylaw with with this lens yet, um. Another thing that I was seeing uh. Reading about a data center project that's happened in Lowell, Massachusetts, was that they have a lot of onsite diesel generation. And that, I think, is something that uh, you know, the happiness of Schutzbury might be very concerned about. I suppose if you're not having diesel generation, then you know, you would you'd be looking towards uh having some some battery uh backup. There are multiple reasons. Even if uh. You're not gonna rely on batteries for backup. Because uh. Just batteries alone are gonna run out. Real fast, right? But I if I understand it. There may be a situation where. You know, you've got a very sensitive electronic equipment and you might want. To, you know, you want to ensure that the the electricity current that's going through your system is a very stable. Very stable. Sometimes you can get um. On the grid, uh different kinds of uh anomalies, uh things like that, uh oscillations and frequency, um. Power surges, that sort of thing, um. That could impact very sensitive equipment. Uh, so one thing I think that is sometimes done is. You're taking power off the grid and charging a battery and then discharging it in a very controlled manner to ensure that. You know, the power supply going into your system is very controlled and um. And doesn't fluctuate at all. And that could be fine, um. But, you know, it's just, uh, you know, something I know that uh people do have concerns about. You know, the energy storage, um, so that would be something obviously we would look at with it. And, you know, the other thing is, um. Yeah, there are concerns, yeah, they have water use, it can be a concern, I think. You know, the thing is, is, you know, you talk about data centers and, you know, down south, they have like billion dollar projects that are on, you know, hundreds and hundreds of acres. Right, that, you know, you're talking. Gargantuan, uh. Systems for something like that. Whether or not there's any kind of market for. You know, smaller facilities that might not. Uh, you know, maybe they use some water and maybe they, uh, you know, there any data center is obviously gonna take a fair amount of electricity, um, but that's, uh. I think that's. That would be okay. You know, this. This could be an opportunity for bringing revenue to the town. So I would be interested in knowing if there's. You know, are there any kind of projects that might be out there that? Might be might be worth encouraging, um, through zoning. And then, you know, regulating, you know, those, uh. Attributes of this of this use that we would want to, you know. You know, discourage. I don't think there's anything that protects data centers, you know, we could go out and just. Prohibit it straight out. Without, uh, batting an eye, as I understand it. Um, so I think that gives us latitude to really carve out anything that. Might be acceptable. And encourage that where while discouraging anything that would be unacceptable. Uh, you know. My guess is that you get to that point and you're not gonna find anything that's economic, but so these are the kind of things that we're looking at there. Does anyone else want to talk about this or have any? Thing else they want to? Contribute to this discussion?
Well, I love the idea of Michael doing some research and sharing what you've got. I think it's a good start. It's it's not something that was at all on my radar and now I'm like, oh, right, that could happen. I mean, obviously, there's gonna be lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of these. As this new technology expands, so. I think it's great to consider being prepared for what might be coming. And yeah, and also like as a potential incentive or, you know, is there a. Level of that development that we might be interested in trying to pursue and, um. Yeah, but particularly in a protective way. Looking into it.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Manufactured housing. Now, this, this is something we kind of skirted. In the last year with our all our extensive discussion on accessory dwelling units, right? Uh, and. As you may know, manufactured housing is essentially your, uh, your trailers, right? And, uh. You know, there's like a backstory to it, you know, it started with, uh. You know, the kind of trailers you think about when you think of trailer parks or maybe out out in the desert, you know, big, uh. Trailer communities. And at some point there, I think HUD got involved and made. You know, this this some work to define manufactured housing, so it's. You know, the units are up to a certain standard. And. I think. It's kind of too bad we don't have Allison here still. I know Furco put out some stuff. They were encouraging, uh, zoning that allows manufactured housing. Um, there are obviously, uh, concerns with it. But some of the kind of conventions may not be. Or I'm using the word convention, maybe, um. Some of the assumptions around it may be worth kind of reviewing. Uh, I think one I've heard is that, you know, if you have a man- manufacturing homes are, you know, kind of more temporary and they don't appreciate in value as much. Or or at all, you know, they de- you know, possibly depreciate in value, you know, that may not be true. There may be some, uh. Potential for appreciation and value of manufactured homes. I don't know if that's true or not, but this, you know, these are the kind of questions we'll look at. So I I would just ask the board, is there any? Appetite for, uh, looking at this, or have you had it with affordable housing for now and we need to, you know? Do other things? Any, any, anyone have any kind of, uh, thoughts on that?
Okay, I have not had it with affordable housing.
Okay.
I mean, I would love it if I had time and I could look at what other towns bylaws. Say about this, you know, I s- I saw, I think, in the Gazette that Irving is getting some sort of affordable housing development. Did anyone else see that? Or know what I'm talking about?
It's vaguely ringing about ringing a bell. You know, the other thing is. When you talk affordable housing, right, you know, like.
Versus modular, yeah.
Was it like, uh, forty B? Is that?
I don't know.
So there's.
Are you talking about, um, manufactured homes is just like a structure on a regular lot, or do you mean like mobile home parks or manufactured home parks as well?
Well, I mean, I think that would be. I I don't think anyone's really trying, gonna try to. Allow, you know, change their zoning to allow for mobile home parks.
Well, it it comes up with manufactured homes. I didn't know if that's why we were talking about it, if it was because of. The potential for many for mobile home parks or just as an alternative structure for residents.
No, it would, you know, I I mean, I would imagine it would be for, uh, you know, an alternative structure for residents. So if you have a, if you have a. A legal lot and, you know, you want to put a, uh. Manufactured house on, you can't right now, you can't. Right?
Even open space design, couldn't you do an open space design?
Well, and when do they have it as a board of health regulation to have, um, manufactured home park? And they only allow one in town right now. So it was just my only familiarity with a local example, so. I thought you might be going in that direction.
Not necessarily, yeah, I mean, you know, I I don't know if, uh. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's something we could discuss for sure, but, uh, so, uh, you know, we can, uh.
You want to speak? I'll wait.
No, I'm I'm good.
I my my only two thoughts. One is. If I think about, you know, a mobile home park. The question would be how how much controversy do you want to jump into again? Um, because clearly that'll be a topic of like, if we allow it, where would we allow it? And we have to think about a zone in town and. That like, you know, it's sort of like, how much bruising do we want to take? Do we want to take a year and sort of breathe? So not to say we should, if it feels like the right thing, we should do it, but I my sense is. Tom's question brings it out. It's like. If you have one on a parcel, it's sort of a version of a tiny home. You know, and it gets back to sort of, okay, what kind of utilities sewer, water, electric do you need to have? And then. Yeah, it's cheaper to drive it on or put it on as opposed to building something, but all the other utilities are gonna make the price go up. Um, and a mobile home park as a whole, you know, Bellum's got one on that corner. Um, you know, on Amherst Road, I guess it is, when you come down west west Bellum. Um, yeah. It's, you know. I my sense, the little that I understand about the history, um. Is. It's in our bylaws because it got adopted from the previous version of bylaws, and when people are doing bylaws like. All at the same time, they all included it for some reason, like there was an impetus and everyone copied it, which is usually what they do. Um, it could be, you know, socioeconomic discrimination that, you know, we want people who just sort of have white picket fence in the single family house. Um, you know, and we don't want to have people who are not invested in the community, so it could be that bias. Um, affordable housing, as we've discussed for the last year, is really problematic, so. I don't know. I mean, it seems like it'd be worth talking about and whether we want to full jump in at two feet. Is an open question, because.
I would say this, um, one, I think, you know, in terms of your history, I think it happened after the subdivision control I went in. A lot of, a lot of the restrictions did anyway, you know, this is probably lumped in there with it. You know, uh, this doesn't need to be a brush, you know, I think, uh. Yeah, I started, uh, you know, looking at this stuff. You know, within the last year or two, you know, I started, you know, I I got the the survey from Amherst that they gave to people and I I was. Trying to put stuff together and then when the Affordable Homes Act kind of, you know, passed and we had to start kind of really zooming in on that. You know, the broader discussion dropped away and we really focused on what we needed to do for ADUs. Um, so going back to this, I think, uh. You know. I'm not obviously gonna have a lot of time to to look at it, but when I. Get motivated to do it, I'll 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 chug away at it, and if anyone else wants to look at anything, you know, look at it and and, you know. Share with the group what you find or what you come up with, what you produce. And we can, I think it's good to just kind of. Chug along, you know, at some point there might need to be, you know, maybe a consultant or someone to help us. Um, but, uh. The good thing is, is as far as, you know, taking a breath, right, you know, it's. It's not being imposed on us by anything, so we don't have to, uh. You know, really do too, and you know, I mean, it's. You know, barring, you know. An amendment that would allow. A mobile home park. Uh, you know, I think it would be, uh. It it's not gonna be a transformative, uh, change, I don't think, right? You know, there there's already. A lot of development on the rural residential zone. And, uh. You know, barring new subdivisions, which obviously are possibility, right? You know, it's, uh, there's not necessarily a huge amount of room for a lot of these things. Especially if we maintain the current dimensional requirements. Right, so. Anyway, you know, that's. Not say we want to change that. You know, but I I think it should be a slow process and just kind of. You know, talk about it, look at it, you know, we we were talking about doing a forum before and then that kind of fell off with, uh, once everything got. All of a sudden, we're looking at, we really need to get this ADU stuff together, right, so. But, uh. So that's, that's what we'll do with that, I think. I'm not hearing any opposition to like talking about it. We could have it in here, um. Another thing that came out of the questions of, uh, data centers. And I think it's just kind of a. Common sense thing is maybe we should, uh. See if we can shop, uh, consultants. And maybe, uh, look at how would we. Try and get a relationship going with, uh, a firm or firms. That. I think it's with special permits, uh, somewhere in the zoning act, there's there's provisions for the planning board to. To hire. A consultant to assist the board in reviewing. A proposal, an application. Uh, that would be. Uh, paid for by the applicant. So obviously, you know, if we get a a big project that comes in. Like. You know, actually, like you were talking about, you know, we're all volunteers, you know, some of us are. You know, have some bandwidth to get after things, but it can get pretty tough. How are we gonna digest all this information, right? You know, we can hire consultants. You know, it's it's carved out in the zoning act and it and it's carved out in our bylaw. But. If we get a special permanent application. We need to. Engage a consultant. And have some of that. Like, I think that 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 part comes before you open the the public hearing. Right, so that's a forty five day window. Isn't that true?
Well. I mean, Deacon can speak, Deacon can speak better to this, but when I think about Wheelock, the two consultants that we had, we had. Uh, a stormwater consultant, um, and that was. After the board reviewed the plans, there was concern about stormwater. Um. And I always forget the name of the company, and then we had the UMass professor who was. Thinking who?
Ty.
Ty Bond, right, yeah. And then we had the UMass professor who was the archaeologist. I think those are the two, but. It seems like it's situational. Once you get into the weeds that you discover that, you know, there's concerns because the board didn't think there's a stormwater problem. We would, you know, they wouldn't have gone shopping for a stormwater consultant. Is that accurate, Deacon?
Yeah, yeah, yes. All right, well, um. You know, would anybody be opposed if, uh, if I try working with our our land use clerk and, uh, maybe, you know, whoever I can get their ear in town hall? And just, uh. Maybe, you know, just kind of do some research, at least get a, uh. Maybe a binder of, uh, different firms and the services they offer for just to kind of have on hand. Uh, you know, once we, if we ever get, uh, an application for something, we'll at least have have a little bit more of a starting point, be a little bit more prepared than we are now, right?
Are you talking specifically for data centers? Or just in general?
In just in general, yeah.
No, that sounds like a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. I think, uh. We were, we're closing the gap on the on the minutes backlog. Uh, so I mean, I I would imagine. You know, Mateo's schedule is gonna open up at least a little bit.
Yeah. So I have one. I have one small question, just in terms of another issue, which I know, you know, it came up in terms of. The thirty day rental for ADUs, and we decided, you know, at the time that we just wanted to sort of. Have the ADU go through and presented without that as a question, since it might be controversial. I think we can either just wait and see how it plays out and see if it's an issue, which I think it's sometimes we talked about, but then we also said, well, maybe we'll revisit after it passes, so. I'm sort of agnostic either way, but I just wanted to put it on the table as something that was, uh, leftover.
I personally don't have, uh. Much, much appetite for it, but, you know, if, uh. Think if, uh, anyone. Is interested in pursuing that, you know, you can. Look at it. Bring it, bring it to us.
Is that the same thing as short term rentals?
Yeah.
Yeah. Category, okay, I just wanna. Thanks.
Where does it stand? Can someone remind me with our bylaws, like, are we allowing that or not allowing that? We didn't allow it, right?
No, it's allowed.
It's allowed? Short term rentals of ADUs are allowed?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's no, there's no restriction on short term rental. There's a provision in the bylaw. That deals with lodging and there's, uh.
You can't rent a. If if it's like a room in a house, you can't rent for thirty days, I think was. As opposed to.
I think hotel and lodge.
Hold on, it's, uh. Renting rooms to lodgers, porters or tourists shall be permitted as an accessory use, provided that no separate cooking facilities are maintained. And provided that no more than three rooms are rented, accommodation shall be limited to a total of six persons in addition to the resident family. So this is renting rooms, right? So that's, uh. Within a dwelling, if you have a. Two bedroom house and you're renting, you can rent, you know, two rooms out. It says no more than three rooms are rented. So if you have a five bedroom house, you can't rent out four of the five bedrooms, or you can't rent out. If you have a a four bedroom house. You know, you can't rent out what, uh. All three bedrooms and then a weird room in the basement or a shed, or I don't know, I mean, uh. Or a dining room or or something like that, right? So and you can't set up a kitchen in one of those rooms. I think that's how I read that. But that's, I think, all that's in there for, uh, it's it's under accessory uses and structures. Just as renting rooms to lodgers. I would imagine that if if you have a. A two, a multifamily dwelling, um. You know, renting out a an independent dwelling is not subject to that, uh. It's not subject to that. It's not subject to that. It may be. Because it's still, uh, you're not renting a room, if you're renting the whole dwelling, I don't know if that would be subject to that. You could probably argue it is, but it's uh. Uh, certainly is not clear that it would be. Um, so yeah, anyway, uh, that would be something that, you know, we can look at. Does anyone have, has, have anything they wanna uh talk about for what we might wanna uh pursue for goals next year, I know we're getting a little late here. So even if we don't really discuss it now, anything you wanna discuss at our next meeting, say, um. I'll, I'll just take suggestions for next time at this point.
Affordable housing, I mean, like the kind of thing like what Pelham just did on. Uh, Amherst Road there, though I know they're connected to the water for Amherst, so obviously that's more complicated in Chutesbury, but. Um, and I also have no time to research it or make it happen, so. Um, I'll throw it out there, though, I just feel like it could be a good thing for us to get something like that in this town. Good for our school, um. You know, and, and protective to a certain extent from. Potential predatory development because we don't have it. Which opens some doors, so. That.
What do we have?
We don't have, um. Uh, like. Multi-unit, we don't have that, we don't reach that percentage that you need to reach. Ten percent of our housing being affordable, which means, I believe, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, or anybody, that. There's some loopholes for developers if they wanted to. Develop something without having to follow our laws, if they were proposing something that had affordable housing as part of the development.
Yeah, that's forty B. Which a- a- as it stands is uh. I would estimate to be extremely unlikely, given the lack of uh public water and sewer. But uh, you know, to your point, um.
That's a dynamic in, in Leverett. With the uh, the rich guy's property.
Right, yeah, that's, that would be a forty B project, right, and I, I mean, I haven't heard anything on that, has, has anyone heard anything on that?
No, and we would have gotten notice, right, if anything was before their planning board.
It's contingent on. Amher- Amherst extending water to there about other things, just cuz there's no water.
To Nathan's point, yeah. Yeah.
Of course, there are, uh, you know. I think that the state legisla- or, you know, I, I, you know. Some of the state reps are talking about. Or at least rolling around ideas about providing public water to some towns like ours. Potentially from the Quabon, and I think. Partially and. You know, the kind of notion that we're not adequately compensated for the uh protected land around the Quabon, and the other part of it is that there's the, all these uh issues with. Uh PFAS contamination in the. And private wells. That's difficult to uh, I mean, everyone spent a town meeting and, or at least seen the warrant where we're, you know, authorizing some, some big dollar amounts for this. Uh PFAS mitigation. Uh, stuff, right, so that's uh. That is something that could potentially change, right now, it's uh. You know, I don't think uh imminent. Um, at least, you know. Not, not in that uh. Big development kind of uh, kind of way. I think, you know, we could get subdivisions, but that's not the, the same as forty B. Okay, I think uh. We'll call that a wrap, you know, we're, we're, we didn't take any votes, but we, you know, Michael is gonna look at uh data centers and. Anyone that wants to can bring anything about affordable housing, manufactured housing, and I'll look at uh. You know, maybe trying to develop some preparedness for uh. Hiring process for uh consultants upon uh receipt of various applications that would warrant. The hiring of a consultant on the dime of the applicant. With that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is. Have our updates, um, does anyone have any updates that we haven't already covered? I've got one. Tom Seifer got appointed to the LWAC uh committee. Congratulations to Tom, have you had a meeting yet?
Um. Tentatively Saturday morning. But it hasn't been scheduled yet.
Saturday morning meeting, is that?
It's always been the third Saturday at nine AM of every month. For the LWAC.
Is, is that allowed?
I. It's the history. I don't know, yeah, I've never really.
There's a lot of tradition apparently in LWAC.
Anyone else, anything else?
Thanks for mentioning it.
Of course. Alright, uh, that'll, we'll wrap that up then, and uh, we have no unanticipated business that I'm uh aware of. Being the chair. I'm uh. Turn it over to Michael to uh assume uh. Uh, acting chair for the remainder of the meeting. I will uh. Sit in on this, but I'm not gonna uh. Engage, obviously. But, Michael, formally handing, handing you the reins.
I'll accept the reins, thank you, um, so I will move to go to executive session for reason number three. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the government's litigating position. Litigation specific to complaint received from calls regarding the Chutesbury solar bylaw, the board will not return to open session. Anyone wanna second that? Okay, so Jeff.
I can.
Great, thank you, Jeff, um, so everyone's in a.
Can I just make a, a quick comment?
Yeah, yeah.
Which I, I just wanna know, obviously, in the past, I've uh. Declined to uh go into the sessions and then, you know, having. Had this subsequent discussions uh with my employer where. They did not see a problem with that per se. And I'm on a note now that I, you know. I would be remiss to not, you know. Given the opportunity, just take uh. The time to observe uh my colleagues doing this work and uh. And I'll note that I will not be participating and only observing. Thank you.
And if we're gonna be observed, we have to be in our best behavior, so.
I, can I have something? Um, Nathan, what happens if they were to ask you what happened? During executive session?
I'm under no obligation to uh. I mean, uh, it's confidential, confidential information. Um, you know, and. I don't think they would.
Yeah, but I just, I'm, I'm concerned about putting you in it.
Well, there, there, there was a. I, I'm under no obligation to divulge confidential information about, you know, from town business to my employer.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Of course.
Um, and before we go in, I'm gonna, is it okay if we invite Tom in, like we've been doing? Everyone good with that? Okay, so why don't we roll call in, um. Nathan, you, you gotta vote? To go in?
I mean, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll uh. Yeah, you put me on the roll, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, are you calling my name right now?
Yeah, Nathan.
I'll, I'll, I'll abstain.
Okay, Keith.
Uh, hi.
Deacon.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Welcome, by the way, Ashley.
Hi.
Yeah. He's frozen on my side, is anyone? I sort of heard an I, an amen I. Okay, so. Uh, Nathan, can you turn off the recording?
Be happy to. Give me a moment. Not end. Where's the uh? I say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end, we're not returning to open session, right, so I'm gonna stop it entirely.
Cool.